This is for us, um I hope that we. We felt the goodness of God. I'm not just saying maybe you, you know, God came through and I have like two millionaire name accounts. If that's your testimony, I'm very happy for you. But just even in the very simple, simple things, I really hope that, you know. Because God is always good to us. Yes, God is always good to us. But I hope that our heart knows it and our. Um experiences, you know, tell it. I really hope that's the case for us. And if that is not the case by any chance. Um I'm praying for you right now that the Lord will. Show you evidently his goodness and he will declare to you that the Lord is good and good. Yes, he declared to you that the Lord is good and good to you in Jesus' name. Okay, so we begin, we begin upon the, um. Okay, I want us to just pray. I want us to pray, um. I want to spread. Well, may I able to come off mute? Yeah, okay, okay. Um I'll be asking you a question later. But I want us to pray, um in this moment. I want us to just, I mean, as is now our culture, I want us to consecrate our hearts and our space environment. Um because it is important that we partner with the Holy Spirit in this moment. It is important that we, um. You know. Build a partnership with our Father. He, we've come to learn the word, you know, the word which is Jesus. We've come to learn Christ. But except the Holy Spirit, we're using to us who will not know him. We may just read of him or learn about him, but we will not know him. So I want us to consecrate our hearts, our space, uh, you know, minds, um. And as the Holy Spirit will silence our minds so that his voice can be the loudest. It wouldn't even be my voice or anybody else that is reading or. You know, explaining something, but it would be that the Holy Spirit's voice would be loud to us. And it would bring light to our spirit in the name of Jesus. It would bring light to our spirit in the name of Jesus. I want us to just pray in. The spirit for, you know, the next two minutes intentionally, 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 intentionally. I want it to be very intentional about praying in the spirit in this moment right now, in this moment right now. Even if you are, you know, at a place where you cannot pray loudly. I want you to, um, pray under your breath, you know. That's the beauty of praying in the spirit. You can. You can express it anyhow, anywhere, you know, at any moment. And this is a. Good moment to pray in the Holy Spirit because when we pray in the Spirit, we know that. We are praying the will of God and the will of God for us in this moment is that we are enlightened and that our minds are quiet, our minds are silent. And even in the midst of, you know, the many things that happen in our environment, maybe you're at work, you're in trance age, you are, you know, currently doing something that you are. You are unavoidably, um, what's the word now? Present for. Um but like even in those moments, even as, you know, the spirit begins to open our hearts, that even in the things that you are doing, you'll be seeing the manifestation of what the spirit is saying in that. Um so yeah, I want us to pray in this great intentionally in this moment for the next couple of weeks. In the term, it's a random, but it costs. Oh, sweet Holy Spirit, we know, we know that the word is a light onto our feet and a lamp onto our path. But we ask it this moment that you be our guide, even as we tour this path. In the name of Jesus, we ask that you lead us. We ask that you reveal Jesus to us. We ask that you reveal Jesus to us. We ask that you reveal Jesus to us. Oh, Holy Spirit, we ask that you reveal Jesus to us. That you glorify Jesus in our spirit, in our minds, even in this moment, that even as we begin to read. There will be an understanding that goes beyond mere information and it will bring transformation to our spirit. In the name of Jesus and it will not just stop there. It will not just stop there. Because indeed, there is no true spirituality if it is not practical, that beyond, beyond, even after it has entered our spirit as light. That it will manifest in the physical of God and it will be good works unto men. It will be good works. It will be good works. That men will see us indeed because your light is upon us. Men will see us and see your good works, oh God. In the name of the Lord Jesus, we ask that your word will bring the light for which it was intended. In the name of the Lord Jesus, who will leave your feet, oh God, I mean, will never leave your feet, but will leave this. In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, who will leave this meeting, who will leave this meeting tonight, who will leave this gathering. With an innate understanding of who you are by the revelation of your word in the name of the Lord Jesus. Thank you heavenly Father, for in Jesus' name we have prayed. Amen, amen. Amen. Alright, so, um, yes, when me I put you on the spot earlier, um, please, I would like to, you know, ask us everyone on the call. Um if at any point you cannot hear me, please let me know, you know, so that I, you know. Just drop it on the group. Either way, I'll see it. Even if I'm not, um, even if my network is not very connected, I will see it on my other device, so. Please always just let me know if you cannot hear me or you cannot hear me clearly or the, uh, music in the background is too loud, you know, others really, um. Thank you. Um, yes, so another thing I would like to be because to do is to always, you know. If as we are reading and studying, um, you see something that is. The, oh my God, I never knew this or, oh, I'm learning this now, or, you know, just really engage in indulging, indulge me, that's what I'm saying, indulge me. Um and, and I would like to, just to, uh. Follow, you know, just to follow through. I'd like to be seeing what you're learning part time. You know, if you can turn the group chat to your nose pad, I would really appreciate it. You know, every now and then if you, um, maybe someone is reading something. And a verse just gets to you and you're like, oh my goodness, this, this, you know, anyway, you know what, just drop it on the group. Um, are we promising that we would, um. Indulge me, indulge ourselves anyway, but indulge me. Are we, is that, am I, am I getting people, you know, people's promises of word? I'm not seeing a response issue. Okay, first of all, tell me, Danny. Alright, thank you. Yes, thank you everyone for, you know, indulging, so, um. Alright, so yes, when we, um, finally, yeah, I'm sorry for scratching you, putting you on this board. Yes, I wanted to, um. I mean, by now, if you have, if you, I think I did it frequently, you know, what you want to do, you used to do. You know, um, spend to refresh our memory, thank you, um, remind ourselves. Maybe not remind ourselves, but just, but you fire yourself, yeah, um. Based on what we learned last week. Uh, yeah, we don't really know that soon. I would like you to move on also. Just maybe two things that, you know, would be highlights for you from, actually, from any of the, from any of the days. Some of these from last week or, um, from, well, you know, that time, you know, that meeting. But I mean, some of these from last week, they're going to be very helpful. What did you learn? What was the highlight for you? Um. What did you relearn or realize or, you know? You have the floor. You can see that you're typing, alright, that's. Um so just with you, you know, read. Um so does anyone else want to say? You know, within last week, um. Hi, Demi, welcome back. Welcome back to the, um.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I think your network is bumping you out.
Actually, I had a call.
Oh. Um, okay. Yeah, so we were, um, sharing our highlights from last week, um. I don't know if you want to take the floor or you want to take the stand. The, the floor is. Um, you know, the group, the stand is, I'm muting your mic, yeah. Actually, I prefer that you unmute your mic because there's always, there's always deep themes when you, when you talk. So, please bless us, brother.
Okay, sorry, I'm still on the road, so I don't know if you can hear me clearly.
Yes, I can hear you clearly.
Okay, so I still, I follow the legacy of Dr. Taffon, he was, um. Firstly, we're reminded of all the things that God did for us as children, as soon. That's like the first major thing, God, God, from all the past ages we saw, as we are from the stands and we are journeying past the days we read. But just saying all the, all the things that God did for us as children, all his promises for those that are still there. To them, not to everybody. So, and, yeah, and another thing we should, well, yeah. The fact that we should speak to, we should speak to the basic, speak to the foundation of Christianity, speak to. What God has given to you. There was a part we read. I can't remember what, what I was talking about. How some people go, uh, looking for distance. At the end of the day, I can't remember which passage it is again.
Um, I think it was in, um, Scouring the Lands. It was a reference, you know.
Yeah, it was a reference scripture, yeah. So that's talk with you, so. Then there are some times they're searching for distance, it's not, it's not the answer. Because that vice makes preference to their priest now. What has given to us that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, I said it now. Uh, share, you share while talking. You know, there's wisdom in your mouth, so, thank you for, for blessing us. Okay, so let me read one of these, um, comments. Thank you, one of these, um, so one thing that stood out for me. Where the Bible explains how much of his son Jesus is and how God has never said that for an angel. Shows how much love, how much love, God, how much God loves his children. Thank you, thank you very much. Um, and I, I mean, just to re- reiterate. Just to reiterate, yeah, um, we are, the way Jesus is, um, the son of God. By, um, conception, by, um, obedience and by resurrection. We are also, you know, sons of God. You know, this, this is a gender term, you know, but like sons as a, a part of a family, a, a, um. Ah, Holy Spirit, how do I explain this now? Um, it's like a title, you know, that we have now. That, that has been conferred on us. The moment we say we. Believe in Jesus and we're going to follow him. So we are sons first by adoption. But we are also sons by obedience, you know, our own conception is adoption because we're already here anyway. So we are sons by adoption, we are also sons by obedience. Um. Uh, uh, ah, there's this scripture in the Bible that says, um. This scripture that I talked about, I'll, I'll find it, I'll find, hold on. Um, okay, sufficiance for. You know, it's basically just making the difference between babes and babies and sons. Because yes, we are sons by adoption, but the, but the reality of that sonship will not just jump on us. It has to be worked through by obedience. It is by obedience that we become sons of God indeed. By adoption, we are sons in, um, well, we're not part of the family. But indeed, in our deeds, we become sons by obedience. That's not part of what we're going into tonight, but that's just things in my heart I thought to share. Um, the chance for. You know, the difference between babies and sons is that, so I think there's a, there's a Jewish fight, explain the difference. There's a Jewish, um, ritual ceremony that they do for, for boys, you know, where. I think it's even older than, older than, um, before Jesus did. Anyway, that is to do for, for boys, when they are taking a certain age, then there'll be a public declaration of. You know, the child as a son of the house. So you say, um, uh, maybe, maybe now becomes a. To what's it, what night? A lord, yeah, maybe becomes a lord, you know, um, or. Or he's now eighteen, I don't know what the, what the maturity age is at that time. But there will be something that will happen, maybe like a game or a fight, some of the game. That will show, give the opportunity for the father of that child, especially if he can be the titled father. You know, to declare that child as a son. And kings do it as well. Where they come to the oldest person that sits on my throne, even before they die, it's already a crowning. So that's what they call crowned prince. You know, but before then, the prince was a prince. The son was a child, you know. But, um, there are certain things that he cannot do. For example, there are some signatures that he cannot append or some documents, even at that time. Um, there's some responsibility that he can't give you. So till that declaration is made, they will keep training him. Even the prince, they'll keep training him, uh, taking him to, you know, um, 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 what's it called? To school. Um, I like, making sure that he goes through a process of sonship. That process for us as children of God in the new testament is obedience. So we, we grow in sonship, we are nest sonship, we like, we can wish, we can strengthen. Our sonship, I don't know if that makes sense to anyone, you know. So even though we are all sons of God by adoption. There is also a huge, there are also huge responsibilities that will not be placed into our hands as a son indeed unless we. Walk in obedience and master the art of walking in obedience. So I hope that helps someone. Yes, I was going to read, um, the additions, what, just to, you know, uh, help us see that truth that. By this real word we have learned now, um. Interestingly, I think we read this, we read this additions for last week. You know, we were talking about the gifts that he gave to men. Um, you know, how Christ ascended and then descended to the, the, to the lows. Anyway, how he gave. Um, different gifts to men, I know that. Um, so I'm going to read, um. Eleven to, yes, eleven to fourteen, no, eleven, eleven to fifteen. Actually, I thought it would be eleven to sixteen. Okay, so now these are the gifts Christ gave to the church. The apostles, the prophets, the evangelists and the pastors and teachers, their responsibilities to equip God's people to do his work. And build up the church, the body of Christ. This will continue until we all come to such. Unity in our faith and knowledge of, of God's son that will be mature in the Lord. So there are, there are babies in the Lord and there are also mature sons in the Lord, you know, measuring up to the full and complete standard of Christ. Then we will no longer be, we no longer be immature like children, can you see? We won't be tossed and blown about by every weed of new teaching. We will not be influenced when people try to trick us with lies so clever. They sound like truth instead. Now this is what sons do. We will speak the truth in love. Growing in every way more and more like Christ. So you see what I'm saying? There is a growth that comes. That, that, that we are expected to, you know, go through in Christ's. So yes, you are salvation. Yes, you now have eternal life. Yes, you will go to an occult, make heaven, but there is still a process. There is a, there, there is more, you know, you can never just be. Except Christ comes returns and brings us to his fullness, really. We cannot attain that fullness. Um, in one day, we cannot attain, in 70 years, so we will keep growing, you know, until Christ has come. So. That's the video of our journey. There is always room for growth. There is always, you know, um, better ways to love. There is always truth to speak. There's always work to be done. There is always discipline to master. There is always, um, um, um. You know, the fruit of the spirit to, to express, to, to, to show. There's always the gift to, there's always growth, basically. There's always something to do. To get better at. There's always, there's always depth to, to, to journey with God in. There's always, um, a lot of things to obey God on. You know, so there's always growth. Um, so yeah, he said we're speaking through the truth in love. Growing in every way more and more like Christ, who is the head of his body, the church. He makes the whole body fit together perfectly. As each part does its own special, special work, it helps the other parts grow. So that the whole body is healthy and growing and full of love. As we are here right now tonight, what we're doing is we're helping ourselves as well. We're helping, we're helping ourselves. But we're also helping ourselves for our generation, you know, um. So we go to church on Sunday and maybe, uh, other days of the week, depending on what denomination you attend. And then you get filled with the word of God, with an experience of God's presence. And then you come back home, you know. And just spread that in your house, spread that in your environment. And if you are, um, if you, if you. What's the word? Are actively in ministry, carry that grace, that power, that wisdom, and then go and throw it out there. As the scripture says, you know, like the gifts, the, um, um. Gifts that Christ gave to men, the apostles, the teachers and all of that, they are equipping us so that we can go and do the work of ministry. So even if that work of ministry means, you know, there's somebody that the Lord wants you to preach to, even if the work, work of ministry means, oh, um. You will go on a charity mission, um, and maybe sent for to the prisons, even if the work of ministry means. Every day, you know, before you leave your streets, you will share the gospel to someone. And even if the work of ministry means you will become a pastor. Anyway, the point is, um, the idea of all these gifts that God gave men is so that. We can be equipped and then we can now start sharing that equipment, quote unquote, to, uh, world, to our environment. Um, to our generation, our families. Okay, so, um. You know, it's just an encouragement to us to intentionally grow and, and there's our sonship. Okay, so quickly, I'm going to be reading, um. Psalm two, you know, um, I think we stopped at nine last week. Then we'll start at ten today. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. You will answer me on time, would, um, we'll go on a prayer. We'll go on a prayer break. Hallelujah. And Shady, thank you, thank you. I know that, you, you need that we read, um, is giving us the idea that there's a lot of work to be done, but be up with it. Be up with it. Okay, so, um, Psalm two, I'm reading N L T and then we'll read L K G B. And Strong's definition, why are the nations so angry? Why do they waste their time with fertile plants? The kings of the earth prepare for battle. The rulers plot together. Against the Lord and against his anointed one. Let us break their chains, they cry, and free ourselves from slavery to God. But the one who rules in heaven laughs. The Lord scuffs at them. Then in anger he rebukes them, terrifying them with his fierce fury. For the Lord declares, I have placed my chosen one. Upon my chosen king on the throne in Jerusalem on my holy mountain. The king proclaims the Lord's decree. The Lord said to me, you are my son. Today I have become your father. Only ask and I will give you the nations as your inheritance, the whole earth as your possession. You will break them with an iron rod and smash them like clay pots. Okay, and then, you know, if we remember, we're saying, um. Last week that, um. We are currently breaking, we're currently breaking, you know, one of the, I mean, Psalms two, I mean, Psalms two. We're currently, you know, breaking, um, the, the nations that are plotting against the Lord, everything that has. Everything that exalts itself, I hope the knowledge of God is against the Lord. Everything that is contrary to the plans of God. Is against the Lord. So our job, even right now on earth, even as we are here right now, our job is to, um, continue to break. You know, as, as Jesus has already started, or has already won, actually, um, who will now begin to express that victory, you know, on earth, so. Um, we're reading from ten, we're finishing this, this chapter today, if anyone to just, we're reading from ten. Um, so let me just return to twelve and then we'll start to break it down. So now then, you kings act wisely. So remember that there is a, um. There is first a question, you know, like, it's like a med, if I'm of meditation, why, like, kill or shine, one nation or store rich, if you know what I mean. You know, why do the nations rage? Like, there, there is, there has been a scenario in, um, on ground. Let's just think dramatically. There's been a scenario on ground in this passage and then the writer. Quote unquote again, is wondering something, is, is thinking about something, questioning this, so little, so little, quite, so lonely, quite, oh Lord. Anyway, it's a lot of point, um, you know, and asking a question. So why do the nations rage? Why do people plot a vain thing? So the, the kings of the earth, they gather themselves together and, you know, they, they actually. And if you remember from Psalms one, when we're talking about the council of the wicked, the council of the ungodly, see verse two. The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers they council together against the Lord. So you see, the council of the ungodly. Anyway, you're busy plotting. So you see, the council of the ungodly, anyway, they're busy plotting ungodly things, taking counsel and acting on that counsel. And threatening the plans of God, you know, let us break their bonds in pieces and cast their cause away from us. And then the response of the Lord to those people and those plans is laughter. Another laughter because something is funny, but laughter because he's mocking them, you know, he's coughing them like. Um, there's a, there's a song I want to sing, but it's not quite spiritual, eh, Jerry, Goga, anyway. Um, scoffing them, you know, the lot la- mocks them in laughter, um. And then he, after laughing, there's a, there's a, um, what's it called? There is a follow-up threat that came with that, a promise, totally, that came with, with the laughter. Um, you know, after scoffing at them, then he said, or rather then, he would speak to them in his words and distress them in his deep displeasure. And if you look back to the far East, that is the church of the Lord and the Judea at the time, everything that Jesus said was, was annoying to them. It upset them a lot, they were offended, you know, by the things that Jesus said. They were deeply displeased, actually, by the things that Jesus said, and that's what caused him, that's what caused them to crucify him. You know, so it wasn't like maybe he did anything, it was just the things that he was saying to them, the things that he was saying to their heart, they couldn't take it. They were in deep displeasure and then they crucified him. Okay, but, you know, God was saying in this, in this, um, chapter. Yet I have set my holy, my king on my holy hill of Zion, meaning I have put Jesus, this is my son, I have put him in a place that. No matter what you people do, the worst that could happen is you will help my plan. And that's what happened, you know, after all their plans, eh, free Barabas, give us Jesus, yada, yada, yada. Guess who is still king? Jesus, guess who is long gone, Barabas, you know, that was like a, um, in your face moment. But yeah, um, now, you know, uh, um, David was not saying here, I would decree the Lord's decree, the Lord has said to me. Our decree, the Lord's decree is one line that David said. Now, the Lord has said to me is the decree. The, the Lord wasn't telling David, the Lord was saying what, you know, he was saying what he was telling Jesus. And trying to not let us be confused, um, you're my son, today I've been gotten you, ask of me and I'll give you the nations for your inheritance. And if you remember last week, we did a talk, you know, into the future, where Jesus prayed, actually, and he asked. And we realized that we are the nations that Jesus has as inheritance. We have, that's why, um, every now and then in Bible scriptures, you see what the Lord is referring to one person as a nation. In the case of Israel, in the case of, well, that's Jacob, in the case of even Esau, in the case of, um, Isaac, you know, like. Everyone to the Lord is a nation, everyone in the Lord, the chosen people, we, the chosen people by grace. We are nations, so we are the nations that the Lord now has, that Jesus has, we are the inheritance of Jesus. We are the nations that he has inherited, so he's not looking to inherit America. If he inherits America, it's because he has his people there, he has his children there, okay? So, um, then, you know, you shall break them with a rod of iron. Um, you shall dash them to the pieces, to pieces rather, like a potter's vessel. When we were in sin, you know, when we were without Christ, before we were restored back to his presence, we were. Um, an enemy of God. And in the process of us becoming the nations that are in, is, is inheritance. You know, they have to be a breaking, the rod of iron, they have to be breaking into pieces. Breaking our beliefs, breaking our old skins, breaking our, um, old way of life, you know, into pieces. You know, that might indeed become a worthy inheritance. Okay, so ten, as I read. Now therefore, so after all that, you know, um, body of conversations between the Lord, David and Jesus. Now therefore be wise, oh kings. Be instructed, you judges of the earth, serve the Lord with fear and trembling. Kiss the sun lest ye be hungry and you perish in the way. One is wrath is kindled for the need to, blessed are all those who believe in him. Now let's see what that means, you know, let's see, let's see, um, um. What it means to kiss the sun, of course, we know that the sun is Jesus' one. And if I read in N K G B, you've seen the essay, um, in caps. But yeah, so let's, let's see what it means when they said kiss the sun or, um. Why the kings, why they acting wisely, you know, why the rulers of the earth and why they instructed to do something about their judgment. Okay, so, um, has somebody passed? Revelations two twenty seven verse. Uh, Revelations two twenty seven, can we please post it? Another person, Revelation six sixteen and seventeen. And then another person, Psalms five verse eleven. And then another person, Psalms thirty four verse twenty two. Let me take that again. Um, one person, um, Revelations two twenty seven. Another person, excuse me, Revelations six sixteen and seventeen. Then Psalms five eleven and Psalms thirty four twenty two. Thank you, Dami, thank you, I'm seeing your messages. Thank you, Maju Shnola, um. I think the last one is Psalms thirty four, have I, am I correct? Thirty four twenty two, Psalms thirty four twenty two. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, thank you, Huda, um, okay, so, um. Let's first go to, you know, um, our Strong's translation so that we can see the meaning of this word specifically. Um, and then see, you know, what was supposed to go from there. Give me a moment. Alright, so, um, ten, be wise now therefore, oh ye kings, be instructed, ye judges of the earth. Now wisdom here, um, is a word pronounced socal, socal. And, um, it means to make or act in circumspect. Meaning intelligence, you know, um, to be prudent, to be, to prosper, to have good success, to, um. Have understanding, to behave oneself, to consider, to be wise, to guide wittingly. To sh- get things right, you know, to be, to come correct, um, yeah, so that's wisdom. So be wise, be prudent, be, um, be right in your judgments, you kings, be intelligent, okay? So there is a, there is a, um, there is an act that shows their intelligence, let's see. So be wise now, it's an instruction to the kings, who are the kings? Um, so kings here is, well, king royalty, okay, um, then judges are. Um, rather instructed, be instructed, um. Literally with blows, so instruction in this case was not even, you know, counsel or guidance. It is beating, you see, with blows, having to chastise. So instruction here is not, um, okay, so there's this part, if you go, if you get to that junction, you cross, then you will take your left. This was not the instruction, this was not the meaning of this instruction, you know, instruction here is saying. You know how they say, uh, maybe you were being rude to your mother and then, or maybe you're watching a video of, um, a white child. Uh, maybe an American boy being rude to his mother. And then you just think in retrospect, like, oh, Lord, if it is the American, you are done, you know, you just know that. You will be instructed in righteousness, you know, with a slap that will correct your soul. So this is what you think of this verse, this word rather refers to, you know, um, to, to, um. Punish actually, to chastise, to discipline, you know, to, to beat. Literally to knock sense into somebody, um, so yeah. So be wise now therefore, oh kings, be instructed. Ye judges of the earth, so the judges are, um, you know, people who, um. Literally judge, people who pronounce, um, a verdict, people who indicate, people who punish, people who give judgment, you know, um. So judges of the earth, of course, earth is earth. So this verse ten, be wise now therefore, oh ye kings. Remember that the, from the beginning, from verse, um, two, you know. The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord. Now in verse ten, after seeing, you know, what the reaction of the Lord is, what the promise is, what the, um. Um, instruction to Jesus, you know, is. There is now a response to the count, to the, you know, putting together of those kings, to their gathering, to their, eh, gossip. Quote unquote, there is now a response for them, like, first of all, I see what you people are doing. Or what you plan to do, or what you've already started doing, um, in a good work. The best I can happen is it will help my own plan. Now, my own son, I have set him on my holy hill. It is there, his kingdom is established forever, nothing shakes it, nothing changes it, you know, nothing, nothing changes it. It would have, you know, the nations for, for his inheritance, meaning even after he wins his victory, there is going to be a reward. We are all the Lord's reward, you know, we are the Lord's reward, we are his inheritance. Now after he has, quote unquote again, boasted, like, this is going to happen. And in fact, it was, it was a, my son, don't worry, just ask of me. And I will give you the nations as your inheritance, and thank God that we are part of that nation, you know. Um, and then he told Jesus what was going to happen or how he was going to convert this nation to his, um, kingdom. Now, in response to the kings in verse two, in response to those kings. It says, be wise now therefore, oh ye kings. In your Bible, say, um, eh, 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 eh. Eh, can see leg ball coast of photo call, you know, lessons be knocked into your heads. Be wise now therefore, oh ye kings, be instructed, meaning lessons enter your head. By a hook or by a crook, you know, lessons be beaten into your heads, ye judges of the earth. See, before we go further, I want us to establish something. Whether or not anybody likes it, hmm? At the mention of the name of Jesus, every knee will bow, every tongue will confess that Jesus is Lord. Whether you are saying acknowledging his lordship because, you know, you are now part of his kingdom. And you are his son, and you are in this, you are his inheritance, and you are acknowledging his kingdom. Or you are acknowledging it because you now realize that. But I wasn't listening. Indeed, 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 Jesus is Lord. You know, which is the case, uh, which will be the case to people who, um, do not get to spend their eternity with Christ. Either way, every tongue will acknowledge that Jesus is Lord, whether here on earth or in the afterlife. Before we go on, I want us to establish that, because it's lordship, cannot be contended. Nobody can, you can't even try it. So whether it is here on earth, where you still have, you know, the willpower to do and undo, to choose and not choose. And you say, okay, I choose that I will serve the Lord and I'm, you know, I belong to the Lord, uh, I acknowledge your lordship of Jesus. Or in the afterlife, when you realize that, okay, almost, it'd be like say, this is the case. You will still acknowledge that Jesus is Lord. Now verse eleven, serve the Lord, because it's an instruction to the kings. The kings who take counsel together to plan against the Lord, to, to plot a vain thing. Now there, there's an instruction to them, instruction in chastity, instruction to them. Saying, serve the Lord with fear and rejoice with trembling. This fear, of course, um, is not, you know, I'm afraid of the Lord, is it, I am in awe. I don't know if there's a word like utter awe, you know, glorious awe of the Lord. Of the Lord, you know, I mean, awe of the Lord, so serve the Lord with fear and rejoice with trembling. Is it, is it using the parable of the cow to rejoice with trembling? If you are rejoicing, you already, there's nothing to tremble, like, you are just free, you know, like, oh, glory to God. Why rejoice with trembling? Because there is a reverence that need, that is needed in this worship of the Lord. In the true worship of the Lord. I really hope that, you know, even as we are hearing this thing, we can relate because, ah. Say lots of people cannot relate yet, I pray that you relate fast, you know. Like, there's a, there's a part that you get to in worship and you are just lost, you are, you are just lost. You are just lost, nothing else matters, and I'm not saying this to, you know, Christianize our conversation. But like, in reality, there's a part that you get to in worship, if you are truly worshiping the Lord. In fact, I'm not even talking about worship, like maybe in the congregation, I mean, worship in your room. There's a part that you get to and you just lose it. It now becomes a, I am nothing, as in, there is, the nothingness of you will be so glorified. Because you will see, you will see the glimpse of God's glory, like, oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness. Really, who is man? If you've not gotten to that stage in your worship, where you're asking yourself, who am I? Like, who, who is this tiny little thing? You've not started worshiping God, I'm not saying that to, you know, put, um, I don't know, fear of missing out in your heart, actually, maybe a little bit. But just so that you know that it is real, it's not just a, a metaphor or, um, an abstract thing. To actually serve the Lord with fear, to worship, to rejoice in his presence, as in, you're just thanking the Lord. Not for anything that he has done, but for who he is, as in, just lost in the magnitude of the splendor of God. It is real, it is a thing. It is real, it's because we are still thanking God for the things that he did and the things that we are hoping that he will do. That we're still thinking, okay, um, Lord, I thank you, Lord, I thank you, Lord, I thank you. That has its place and is good and is expected of us. But this scripture was talking about you rejoicing with trembling, like you are just, you are just, you are just realizing your nothingness. And that if there's anything at all that you have, it is from him. If there's anything at all that you own, it is from him. If there's anything at all that you have access to, it's because the Lord has granted it. The people who are wise and people who are instructed. What they do is they serve the Lord with fear. They serve the Lord with fear. They serve the Lord with fear. People who serve the Lord with fear, they are not comfortable taking the Lord's name in vain. They're not comfortable doing the Lord and doing the world. Hmm. They're not, they're not comfortable using the Lord's name to, you know, lie to people or to do people. You know, when a brother comes to you and says, the Lord said I should tell you, you're my wife. And you know, he knows deep down inside you that the Lord didn't say nothing. The Lord did not say jack, but you see that you go to church, you know, and you're fervent and it's like, oh, when I say the Lord says. You will listen to the Lord because you will think it's not me. Hey, there is no fear in your heart. That like David, or rather like, like Joseph, you know. Our stance towards loss and towards sexual immorality will be, ah, I should do this and sin against my Lord. It wasn't, it was not even bothered about forty five's wife, he couldn't even be bothered. In fact, I'm sure that he probably thought it, it was going to be killed, you know. But like, yeah, yeah, you have presented, you know, all the luxuries of this world that I have suffered a lot to want to have. But guess what? I serve the Lord with fear and trembling. So all your temptations go on me. And in this case, even, even like David, serving the Lord with fear and trembling doesn't mean that maybe there are no times when you would, you know, hit. you know, hit a stone, or hit a stumbling block, and you will fall, and, and you would, uh, uh, um, trip. But guess what? Serving the Lord with fear and trembling is when the Lord convicts you of your sin. There is an acknowledgement that comes from your heart, and you say, oh, my goodness, yes, I am the man I have sinned greatly before the Lord. And you go, and you repent. Serving the Lord with fear and trembling. He's saying, I will not give to the Lord what cost me nothing. I will not give to the Lord like I'm giving to my, to a beggar on the street. And by giving, I don't even just mean money. But like, in the quality of the things that we claim to give to the Lord, in our service, in our, oh, um, I'm, I'm going to church today, and you're just going, okay, 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 another Sunday in church. There is no, there is no intentionality on your path to actually be in service. There is no intentionality on your path to actually, you know, worship, during worship. You are the one that will be fasting to, 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 um, um, pray. You are the one that will be fasting to, to move, I don't want. With fear and with trembling. With fear and with trembling. It is a fear of the Lord that would cause a Daniel to sit with kings and rulers and noble men in a palace and say, I would rather quench, I would rather eat veg. In fact, it was, it was so, it was so, um, um, what's the word? It was so foolish, you know, to, to the other men, to the other fine boys, quote unquote, during Daniel's time, that he were like, how can you say that? How can you sit down there and be saying, in the midst of all these fat things that were being fed with his, his eh cucumber and the lettuce you want to be eating? Are you trying to lose weight? You know, like, there is food here, let's, let's. Plus, they brought them from, from, they're actually slaves, that they said, okay, you know what, um, let's build, let's build an army of wise men for ourselves in that, in Babylon. So like, they brought them, they were in captivity. So they could have easily said, we're prisoners anyway, we're just prisoners without change, so, you know, let's, let's go through, let's follow through. But Daniel proposed in his heart, it is a fear of the Lord. It is a fear of the Lord. And there is no sitting on the fence. You are either serving the Lord with fear, or you are not serving the Lord. Because if it's not acceptable, then there's no point. There's something that God has, you know, placed in your heart. But because you are just so used to doing things, um, half-assedly or lackadaisically, you just, okay, 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 we'll just do it and go. Or, okay, maybe you're going for, um, what do they call that, you know, evangelism. And you just want to count the numbers. It would have to be beyond that. It would have to be beyond that. It would have to be beyond that. It will have to be beyond that. It would have to be beyond that. That every moment with the Lord, every time, every opportunity that you have to spend with the Lord. I mean, we are always in the presence of God, because we are children of God, but there's also a consciousness that comes when you are actively doing something with the Lord. Like, Iggy, you are praying, or you're singing, or you're worshiping, or you're studying the word. Don't do it half-assedly. Don't do it half-assedly. Don't pray because you just want to tick things off your to-do list. Let it be an intentional time of fellowship with you and the Lord. Be wise. Don't take your devotion lightly. Don't be a Christian that does not read the word of God. It's what's in the word, I remember that, you know, eh, eh, the Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want, and I just run with it. Don't be a Christian that is, that, 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 your, your spirit is county. In fact, there's nothing for the Holy Spirit to remind you of when he wants to bring things to your knowledge, because you are not reading it. You know what I mean? You don't know, you don't know it, so, if you want to remind, you only remind somebody of something that they know before. Even Paul, with all his revelation, he first had to give himself wholly to the study of the word. Even Jesus, the Lord, Jesus, the Lord, our Lord and Savior, that came, God in flesh, he gave his time to start doing the scriptures. He spent his life in the temple, discussing with teachers of the law. Do you know what that means? Do you know how they read in those days? Maybe I, we, we sent the video, you know, some, some weeks back. Imagine doing that every day, every day, every day. Every day. I am wondering how he knew what was written to, what was written concerning him according to the volume of the books. This is not a, you know, moment of condemnation. It's to awaken our spirits, to shut down laziness in our spirits. Take your devotion lightly. Take prayers like, rather, don't take your devotion lightly, I beg your pardon. Don't take prayers lightly, take them seriously. Every opportunity to, to, to meet with God's people, every opportunity for you to meet with God, even in your closet, is a time to be devoted. Is a time to, to be in awe, to, to, to reverence God, is a time to be intentional. Don't be like Saul, who just wants to make the sacrifice, you know, by all means, oh, it's seven days, then let's go. Don't just, don't let your time with God be another thing to mark off your calendar. It's good if you have, you know, um, what's it called, um, project management platforms for it, you know, if you're struggling to, um, be productive, or you, or you just need to put yourself in check. But beyond ticking it off, oh, I prayed today, oh, I read my Bible today. Don't let it be a one-time thing, oh, I'm just gonna read in the morning, and that's it. Make it your lifestyle. Because really, it shows how much, you see, how much you give yourself to prayer, how much you give yourself to the study of the word, shows how much you fear God. Don't be the Christian that will be fasting, yet you'll be speaking ill of other people in your fast. Don't want it, because there's no point. Don't be the Christian that have gone all the mountains and all the valleys, yet when you come back, you are the one that come and pick a fight with your neighbor. They already know you. They don't, they're not, not to, not to cross you. Hey, don't, ah, don't go near her, she's, she's not all right, too. There's something in her head. And you are fine with it. You are, you are, you know, his pride, you are boasting, boasting of, of, of course. You may not like me, but you can't disrespect me. Don't be that Christian. In fact, when Jesus put himself, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to give a lot of room for disrespect. Eh, if they slap one cheek, turn the other one, so that they can slap it. When he said turn the other one, he's not saying turn the other one, so that you can walk away. It's on the other one, so they can slap it. Don't be the Christian that only thinks about God when it's time to go to church, or, you know, join T O T, or join Forge, or any other prayer meeting. As interesting and as good and as blessed as those platforms can be, it will not take the place of your personal devotion. There's a word that Prophet Tumira, you know, um, shared some time ago. Um, I'm sure I'll be paraphrasing when I say it, but I'll say it anyway, you know. He says that, um, you can, you can, um, love the Lord, um, you can love him, you can sing to him, you can dance to him, you can, you know, um, um, do his things. But if you don't fear him, you will not hear him, and it is true. It is true. If you don't fear the Lord, you will not hear him. And that's why you keep reading the Bible, and you're wondering, okay, this reminder that people are getting, I'm not understanding what's going on. It's because you don't fear the Lord. It's because you don't fear the Lord. I'm truly hoping that, you know, this, this moment, this moment, uh, um, uh, um, is, is bringing conviction to our hearts, including myself, including myself. And because of the number of times we have to meet online, there's a lot of lackadaisicalness that can come with these. You'll be praying, I want Instagram, I'm just accessing this game now, wow, I, I see these people, hey, they don't upload this video, ah, my show. And then you are praying, because I mean, you can pray in tongues, so why not? Fear the Lord. Be instructed. Sometimes, whatever, verse fourteen says, the friendship of the Lord is for those who fear him, and he makes known to them his covenant. The secret of the Lord, N K J V, is with those who fear him, and he will show them his covenant. The reason why you don't yet know what the will of God for you is, what the Lord wants you to do next, is because there is no fear in your heart. You don't fear the Lord. It's because you don't fear the Lord. And this is not a, a calling out moment, you know, because as, as, as the, as we are being instructed. As we are being instructed, I really want us to be encouraged as well, because we are, you know, children of God. But as I've been instructed, that is hitting us, myself inclusive, right, left, front and back. It's not supposed to, you know, just bring sorrow or repentance, and that's the end. It's for you to go and get up, quote unquote. I feel like I've put it a lot, but you get the point. Take your walk with God very seriously. Take your walk with God very seriously. Show Jesus that you are worthy investment. He, he, you already think you are worthy, that's why he said, you anyway, but you now prove it. You now prove it. Be wise now, therefore, all ye kings, be instructed, you rulers of the earth, ye judges of the earth, Father, serve the Lord with fear and rejoice with trembling. Serve. By implication, serve till, to enslave, to keep in bondage, bond service, meaning I have, I am sold out. I am sold out to serving this person, to waiting on this person. Husband man, a husband man, what he does, he, he tends the garden, he, you know, takes care of the garden, that's service. Laboring, laborers. So to serve, to serve the Lord means to be a fellow laborer in his viad. To serve the Lord means to tend to his garden. And for us, as children of God, in this, you know, part of the world, his guardian can be your husband, his guardian can, actually is your husband, is your wife. How are you serving? How are you tending? How are you stewarding his gifts? He has placed people in your care. How are you stewarding them? You have people that report to you, maybe at work. How are you stewarding them? Because whether you like it or not, eh, in this kingdom, we don't have ranks based on who is eh, who is more known, who is, who is most famous, who is more powerful, and all those things. The way God ranks us is who serves the most. It's always my servants this, my servants that. People have ranks with the Lord. He will not call them, have you, have you seen my king? Have you seen? He's always my servant. When there was boasting about Job, he said, have you considered my servant Job? It's always, there, there's always place for service. One of the pastors I listened to, um, Pastor Lockley, um, Zakaria, once I said, you know, um, the, the, the chief servant seat is always empty, and that's what you should fight for. And it's true. Everywhere you go to, there's always somebody wanting to be waited on. There's always someone wanting to prove that he's, you know, the boss, and then he moves things around here. But guess what? The seat of the servant is always empty. Normal people don't, they don't contend for that kind of seat. It's always, what can I get, what can I get, what can I get? The people who are sons of God, they are servants. Their first question is, how can I serve? What can I help with? What can I give? You see, we must deal with this victim mentality that says, oh, what can this person give me? Oh, if I, if I take my case, you this, this doesn't mean that, you know, this is not, um, 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 what's the word now, invalidating our challenges and the things that we have to resolve every day in our lives. But guess what? You can't keep playing the victim. You cannot keep being the one that people give to, give to, give to, give to, give to all the time. And by give, I don't just mean money. There's always something that you need to fix. There's always something that you need to, 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 to attend to. In this kingdom, insupportable of that, because God will send people to you, and he will, he will comfort you, and, and, you know, just be your, your, be El Shaddai for you indeed. But you also have something to give. There's always something for you to steward. There's always something for you to steward. Serve the Lord with fear. Reverence. And rejoice. In fact, the, the translation of this rejoice says, properly to spin around. So it's not, it's not saying be joyful. It said rejoice, like, it's an instruction, it's for you to do, it's an actual word, for you to do something, like, like, like saying, go to that place, or carry that thing. It's something that requires, you know, a movement. It's a kinetic action, if you, you know, um, studied red physics in school. Rejoice means to speak to, as in, to be violent in the spirit, to be violent, violently rejoice in the presence of God. We're trembling. We're trembling. We're trembling, because you know, you know, you know, you know, you know, you understand this sovereignty, you know that he is God. You know that he is God. Rejoice with trembling. Rejoice with trembling. Rejoice with trembling. Serve the Lord with fear, rejoice with trembling. Let us quickly read, um, the verses that we, you know, put up, um. So Revelations two, so it says, um, two twenty-seven, he shall rule them with the rod of iron. They'll be dashed to pieces at the potter's vessel, as I also have received from my father. Okay, so I think we need to read, um, preceding verses, so that we can understand the full context of that, of that verse. Um, let me see, Revelations two seven, seven. Okay, so I'll start from twenty-four. Now to you, I say, now to you, I say, and to the rest of, and to the rest in Thaithira. As many as do not have this doctrine, who have not known the depths of Satan, as they say, I will put on you no other body, but hold fast what you have till I come, and he overcomes and keeps my walks to the end. To him I will give the power over the nations. I don't know if you remember what I was saying about sonship, you know, through obedience, and how there is a reward that comes with, um, um, there, there is a, there is responsibility, there's an entrustment, and I, I hope that's the word, or an entrusting of responsibility that comes with obedience, sonship through obedience. If you've not obeyed, you know, and, and, um, um, proven your trustworthiness to the Lord, there are some things that he cannot entrust into your hands, and, you know, as we can see here. Um, and he overcomes, you know, and keeps my walks to the end, unto him I will give power over the nations. He shall rule them. Now, we, we are those people by the grace of God, we are those people. He shall rule them with a rod of iron, and they'll be dashed to pieces at the potter's vessel, as I also have received from my father. Jesus is saying here, that to us, to us, if we also, like him, will become sons of God by obedience, if we also, like him, will become sons of God by the way we fear the Lord, and we rejoice in his presence with trembling, he will give to us too. This revelation, this promise is not just to Jesus, it is to Jesus and his hairs. It is to Jesus and every other person who decides to obey, who decides to follow through to the end. Who decides to follow through to the end? Who decides to follow through to the end? He was, he was an ear, let him hear what the priest says to the churches. Okay, so Revelation six, seven, six sixteen to seventeen. And say, and said to the mountains, and rocks, follow us and hide us from the face of him who sits on the throne, uh. Okay, so we still, of course, have to read a little bit of the preceding verses, so that we can see, um, the context. So Revelation six, um, I'll read from. Aha, I'll read from twelve. I looked when you opened the sixth seal, and behold, there was a great earthquake, and the sun became black as sackcloth of air. And the sun became black as sackcloth of air and the moon became like blood and the stars of heaven fell to the earth. As a fish tree drops its lead figs when it is shaken by a mighty wind. Then the sky receded as it scrolled when it is looked up and every mountain and island was moved out of the place. I want us to listen very attentively. And the kings of the earth, the great men, the rich men, the commanders, the mighty men, every slave and every female. Heed themselves in caves and in the rocks of the mountains. And said to the mountains and, and rocks, fall on us and hide us from the face of him who sits on the throne, from the wrath of the lamb. I think this was in reference to, um, verse, give me a moment, verse, um. Verse ten, yes, verse ten, you know. I remember when, I remember when I was saying, when I was saying that. Thank you, Holy Spirit. Remember when I was saying that, you know, whether in this life by choice or after this life by no choice. You, people will acknowledge, every tongue will acknowledge that Jesus is Lord. This is the case here. This is, you know, the, um, um. Happenstance after Christ has returned and now there is time for judgment. And then there is time for judgment, whether or not everybody likes it, they will acknowledge that Jesus is Lord. So acknowledge it now that you have the mouth and choice. Anyway, we carry on, um, then verse, uh, then sorry, Psalms five verse eleven. You know, I think this was, this was talking about, um, verse. He verse, verse twelve. So let's just. Hold on. Yeah, so I think the rest, Psalms five verse eleven, you know, um, thirty four, twenty two, um, yeah, thirty forty two. You know, it's just butressing verse twelve. But let all who take refuge in you rejoice. So when you hear the word rejoice said, don't just think of it as, um. Glory and that is all glory to God. Like you say. There's a way pastor here and, you know, um, um, demonstrated it. Like you jump on one leg and you just spin around, like it's a, it's a crazy out of the blue, you know, radical behavior. The, I, the actual meaning of rejoicing. It's not just, oh, I'm happy, so I'm just dancing to the Lord. No, 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 no. It's a, you know, if you see, you've seen all those charismatic videos, the way they actually run or they do something really crazy. That's what it means to rejoice. So let all who take refuge in the Lord rejoice. Let them sing joyful praises forever. Spread your protection over them, that all who love your name may be filled with joy. And, um, Psalm forty forty two, the Lord redeems the soul of his servants. And none of those who trust in him shall be condemned. In fact, this Psalm thirty two, thirty four, twenty two, you know. He's not even talking about, and, and I want us to read the Bible and actually break down every word, so that we're not carried away by semantics. The Lord redeemed, redeems the soul of his servants. Redemption came through Jesus. So it means that we, that we put our trust, that we believe in the name of the Lord. There is no condemnation for us again. We have been redeemed. We have been redeemed. We have been redeemed. And not only that, there is now no condemnation for us again. Yes, there is discipline once in a while, you know, when we, um, fall off track and, and, you know, this we just need to chase five cents back into our heads and. Instruct us again. But there is no condemnation, because in the sight of our Father, we are always accepted. There is always room for him in us. There is always a place. There is always, there is, we, we already have an identity. He knows us. In fact, the reason why we are striving to know him is because he already knows us. And so I'm just saying, okay, Lord, just show me yourself. And as you show me yourself, just let me, let me really see who I am, because even when we don't know ourselves, we're not definitely recruited. We're, we're not, um, what's the word, um. We're not, um, conscious, yeah, when we're created. So he's the one that designed us, put all the facts, put all the, um, emotions, you know. And set before us a path. So the reason why we can come to him and say, Lord, you know, I want to know you. Is because he knows us. So for us, for us, for we, the children of God, our portion is always good. Our loss is always good. There is no condemnation. There is no condemnation. And that's one of the things that the death and resurrection of Jesus did, to silence every voice of accusation over us. Every claim that the enemy thinks he has. Oh, this person did not, this person did not, oh, your son, and you say your son, he denied him, he denied him, he denied him. Hey, Christ is our advocate. Such that in spite of our faithlessness, he, see, he loves it, there, there was a day, you know, um, God was telling me. And he was saying, no matter how far gone or how, um, and by far gone, I mean, you know, maybe. You've been inconsistent with devotion, you know, for, for a number of days and I'm like, ah, okay, I've missed two days, um. And maybe, maybe I was supposed to be praying at a particular time and, and like, oh, I've missed two days and they're like, ah, God, I'm so sorry. Where do I start from again? Hey, okay, I will, I will pray, pray when I have to fill in my spirit, then I will, you know, start to talk to the Lord. And then he was telling me that. Me, I don't change. I don't shift. So imagine that you are somewhere, maybe, maybe, maybe there's a place that you meet with the Lord every day. Let's imagine that it's in your kitchen. Believe it when I tell you that the Lord will always, of course, God, the Lord is everywhere, but like in, in, um. For this specific reason of meeting with you, he's always in that kitchen, at that time that you have set with him. So suddenly he said, I don't, I don't change, I don't shift. I am constant, like I'm always here. Now, if you go away or you, you know, maybe, um, trip, take a break, whatever the case is, backslide, you know, as worse as backslide. If, as long as you come back, I will always be here. I will always be here. When the Bible says, um, 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 you know, all good and perfect gifts come from the Father of light, um, in whom. There is no bearableness, neither shadow of turning. What that means is. Have you seen, have you, have you ever seen an object? I don't think we have. I don't think physics, physics has allowed us that yet. But imagine that there is a light bulb, hmm, that all around it is light. And so. I'm never sure where we are going into this direction right now, but as the Lord will have it. Anyway, a light bulb. All the surroundings is light. There is no shadow, you know how they say, oh, the, the lamp does not lift, uh, its own bottom. Even at the bottom, there is no shadow, there is no darkness, it is light. At the side is light, at the other side it is light. When you enter into the sphere of that light, even you, there is no shadow. But guess what? When you step a bit away from the, you know, reach of the light, then you can see the shadow of your step at the back. And that's one of the things that light does. The light itself will not have a shadow, but everything around it, and that's why light exposes. So Lord was saying, I don't shift, I don't change, I am constant. I am constant. So as long as you come to me, as long as you always come back, my arms are always open. So what if you miss two days? So what if you haven't kept seven AM as your time? It's a new year, you start again. The Lord's arms are always open. And he doesn't look at you with condemnation. He's just happy to have you again. And you can pick up from when you left and continue the journey with him, because there is no condemnation here. There is discipline. And there is a, um, conviction that leads to godly sorrow, or rather, there is a conviction, yeah, conviction that leads to godly sorrow, that leads to repentance. But there is no condemnation. There is no guilt. There is only surrender. There is only surrender. There is only surrender. And that's the difference between, you know, somebody who understands his sonship and somebody who doesn't. Somebody who doesn't comes and feels like, oh, I'm dirty, um, or my house is unkept, and by house, I mean like ourselves, you know, is unkept. So I must spoken to the Lord in a while, and then you come and you're like, okay, where do I start from? And because of the, the heavy burden of where do I start from, you just drift back again and you do something else. No. No. The Lord's arms are always open. There is no, you are in son. There's no condemnation. Will he convict you? Yes. Will he knock sense into your head? Yes. But he will also empower you. 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 And verse twelve says, kiss the son lest he be angry. And you perish in the wind. When his wrath is kindled, but they lead to blessed are those, are all those who put their trust in him. So I want us, I want to quickly just, um, you know, translate that to us, translate the words for us, you know. Kiss means, um, through the idea of fasting of. Um, attachment, you know, so kiss, yeah, it's not saying, it's not saying find, find the mouth of the Lord and, you know, beck him there, no. Saying fasting yourself to the Lord. Like follow him, you know, the way, um, chicks, how they follow their, the mother hen. That's what he means. Fasting yourself to the Lord, be attached to the Lord. Be equipped with the Lord, to the Lord, be his, you know, um, armory. Armory, I, 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 I hope that's the word. Kiss the son, of course, the son is, uh, the head, that's Jesus, lest he be angry. Lest he be displeased. So fasting yourself to the Lord, and this is what this means. You cannot be lukewarm. Be in the Lord and be hot. You cannot be doing, I mean, you cannot be doing the Lord and be doing the world, that's what it means. Fasting yourself to the Lord. Else he speaks you out. Stay there a day, when you are ready, you come back properly. And fasting, because I also don't want us to just build a, a, um, 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 an idea of, you know. Um, I have to be clean before I come to the Lord, or I have to always have, get it right before I come to the Lord. No, 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 it's not the hell to get it right. You don't leave, you don't say, you're not going to have your bath because you are dirty. That's the reason why you should have your bath, duh. You cannot say you will not come to your house because it's untidy. Hello, pick your hands and tidy it. Enter the house and start to tidy. That's how, that's how you become clean anyway. So fasting yourself to the Lord is saying, even in the seasons where you feel like you are inadequate, your first eh, eh, point of action. Is not to run from the Lord, is to come to the Lord. Is to come to the Lord, fasting yourself to Jesus, lest he be displeased. And then you perish. Perish in this case is saying, you know, to wander away. And many, many are currently perishing, if you know what I mean. Many are currently perishing, because you are not fasting to the Lord. They're fast, they're trying to, they're trying to follow the Lord and do something else. You are not fasting. Fasting mean is your Lord indeed, your Lord and Savior. You, you know what it means to be somebody, for somebody to be your Lord. You don't have a choice, you don't have a, you don't have a, 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 you don't have a life of your own, in that sense. He's the one that tells you what to do. He's the one that gives you what to say. He's the one that gives you what to have. And as the saying goes, the Lord does not give me, let's, let's, let me remain on giving. If the Lord doesn't do it, then you remain undone. Because he's Lord. Because he is Lord. The repercussion of not fasting ourselves to the Lord is that we wander away. And that's why you, you start to, so, so when you wonder why people have certain ideologies. This is where it comes from. They've removed their selves, themselves from the grip of, from the, uh, what's the word, from the belt, you know, they are now unfasting. And so they wander away, they start to think different things. Oh, let's call God sheep. Let's use the feminine. Because if you are fasting to the Lord, these things, they will not be the kind of thinking that you have. If you are fasting to the Lord, you not be, you would not be, you not be, um, um, looking for other plans to validate your sin. If you are fasting to the Lord, you will always look for ways to grow in love. And you will not just be, you will not just be, do me, I do you, an eye for an eye, you know. You give me, I give you back. Oh, I, I, I match your energy. That would not be your testimony. It would be, Lord, this is hard. It's hard to love this person, it's hard to, you know, uh, be calm in this situation, just help me. Because in spite of the pain, in spite of the, the inconvenience, you would rather serve the Lord. And we don't, we don't, we don't, um, what's the word? We don't, um, um, if we call him Lord, we, that's, that's what he means, serve. You serve lords. You are not, you are not, you know, um. What's the word now? You're not, you're not, you're not coming, oh, I know this person with lords. If somebody is your lord, your response to his lordship is service. So fasting yourself to the Lord, to the son, you know, lest he be displeased. And you wander away. And when his anger, when his countenance is, is, um, on fire. When his countenance is on fire. Or rather, not and. Um, fasting yourself to the Lord, you know, lest he be displeased, when his countenance is on fire, lest, lest, lest he be displeased and you perish. Wander away. Now blessed. 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 How happy, we'll come back to Psalms one again, how happy. How happy, how happy are those, are all that, are, are all they, rather, are all those who put their trust in him? How happy. The secret to a happy life is to fear the Lord, walk in his ways, take the counsel of the Lord. Don't be found in the way of sinners. Don't be found on the seat of the scornful. Don't be found there. Where they are gathering together to talk terrible things about people, don't be found there. Where they are gathering together to, 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 um, what's the word, to enact terrible policies, don't be found there. Don't be found there. Hmm, don't be found there. Follow the Lord. Stay with the Lord. Stay with the word of God. Let the word of God be your standard. That's how you know the Lord. Serve the Lord. Let everything that you do, let it be service unto, as unto the Lord, as unto the Lord. Whether in marriage or in single life, everything is as unto the Lord. As you go to work and you are, I saw a post, you know, what somebody was saying, uh, it's a meme, the person was, um, I think it was the gorilla or something that was. Walking grumpy, and the person was saying me on my way to the work I prayed to God for. And sometimes I can relate, like, oh, okay. Lord, thank you for this job, but, uh. Even in the midst of all of that, remember service unto the Lord. Everything that we have and own and do is service unto the Lord, because he's Lord. So our response to, to the life that we now have. Is service. As I work, as I press my laptop, as I count the, I don't know, take inventory, as I teach, as I. Design something, as I talk to people in my workplace, as I, you know, have conversations or guide customers around. Is in service unto the Lord. Is in service unto the Lord. Is in service unto the Lord. And except you are fasting to the son, you can't actually even know how to serve properly. And so the Lord can't start to send his sons your way, because the idea is for sons to be helping sons, irons to be sharpening irons. But when you, you have not even known how, where to find your own sharpener, the Lord cannot send the person you are supposed to sharpen to you. Sometimes by the ones even delaying our blessing, because we've not matured. We're still being, you know, just to and fro. We're still being, we're still doing, eh, we're still playing games with the Lord, we're still playing games. I want us to just begin to pray, a very simple prayer, but I want us to pray intentionally and with the whole of our hearts. And if you can come off mute, you know. Um, just come off mute. I begin to pray in the spirit and say, Lord, I will be fasting to you. I will fasting myself to you. I will fasting myself to you. Actually, help me to fasting myself to you. Yes, help me to fasting myself to you. Help me to fasting myself to you. Help me to fasting myself to you there, Lord. Help me to fasting myself to you. Oh, help me to fasting myself to you. So that if the world comes, if the world comes, they will find nothing of themselves in me, because I am so fasting to the Son. I'm so fasting to the Lord. I'm so fasting to the Lord. Help me to be fasting to you, oh God. Help me to be fasting to you, help me to be fasting to you. I don't want to do life outside your way, I don't want to do life outside your presence. I don't want to do life based on my own intelligence, because it is nothing, it is nothing, it is nothing. It is you who have given me this life, oh God, I want to live in according to your standards. I want to live in according to your will, I want to please you, Lord, I want to please you. I want to please you, I want to be that happy man who puts their trust in you, oh God. Help me to be fasting to you. Help me, 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 Lord, help me, Lord. Help me, Lord, 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 help me, Lord. Help me to be fasting to you, Jesus. Help me to be fasting to you. Help me to be fasting to you, help me to be fasting to you. Help me to be fasting to you, as Scripture says, it is you who works in us to will and to do, oh God. I surrender myself, I surrender myself, I surrender myself, I surrender myself. As you prune me, as you prune me, as you prune me, oh God, as you teach me, as you instruct me, as you instruct me, I will follow, 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 I will be wise, I will not be foolish. I will not be foolish, I will not be foolish, oh God, I will not be foolish, oh God, I will follow. Even when it is happening, even when it is painful, even when it is inconvenient, I will follow your way, oh God, I will follow your way. I will follow your way, I will follow your way, I will follow your way. I will follow your way, Jesus, I will follow your way, I will follow your way. I will live this life according to your will, I will live this life according to your standards, Lord. I will live this life according to your standards. I will not be carried away by the policies of this world. I will not be carried away by the systems of this world. I will not be carried away by the culture of Babylon, oh God. I will stay with you, I will stay with you, I will stay with you. Even if it means in that moment I'm standing alone, I know that I am with you and it is enough for me. I will stay with you, I will stay with your word, I will stay with your truth, oh God. I will stay with you, I will stay with you, I will stay with you, I will stay with you. Even when I don't understand it, even when it doesn't make sense to me, even when it doesn't make sense to my carnal mind, Jesus. I will stay with you, I will stay with you, because only you have the word of eternal life, oh God. I will stay with you, I will stay with you, I will stay with you until I receive life. I will stay with you for daily bread. I will stay with you, oh God, as you instruct me in righteousness. I will stay with you, I will stay with you, I will stay with you, I will be fasting to you. I will be fasting to you, as you lead, I will follow, I will obey, I will obey, I will be a son indeed, I will be a son indeed. I will not be immature in my ways, yes, I will not be immature in my ways, I will not be immature. I will stay with you, I will stay with you, I will be counseled by you, oh God. I will stay, 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 and I will stay, I will stay, I will stay, Lord Jesus. Help me, 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 oh God, help me. Help me, help me, Jesus, help me, Jesus, help me, Jesus. Oh, I want to live a life that pleases you, I want to live a life that you are proud of, oh God. Ah, I want to live a life that you are proud of, help me, help me, Lord. Help me, Lord, help me, Lord, help me, Lord. Help me to steal what the things that you have put in my care properly, I don't want to be foolish. I don't want to mismanage the things you have put in my care, Jesus. The people you have put in my care, oh God, the family that you have put in my care, Lord. I want to steal them properly, help me, 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 Jesus. Help me, Jesus, oh, help me, help me, help me, help me, Lord, help me, Lord. Even when it seems like your way is the other's way, I will stay, 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 Jesus. I will stay, 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 I will stay. Yes, I will stay. When the decision of this world wants to test me, I will stay, I will stay with you, I will stay with you and in you, oh God. Help me to be fasting to you, help me, 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 help me. I know that the arm of flesh will fail. And so I put my trust in you, oh Lord, I put my trust in you, you are, you are, you are the one who is able to save us from falling. Help us, help us, oh God, help us, help us, help us, help us, help us. Help us, Lord Jesus. Help us, Lord Jesus. We want to be truly happy, we want to be truly happy, we want to be sons indeed. Yes, we want to be sons indeed. Help us, oh God, help us, help us, help us, help us to build character. Help us, help us, help us, help us to be empowered, oh, help us. Help us, Jesus, help us, Jesus, help us, Jesus, help us, Jesus, help us, help us, ah. Help us, Jesus, help us, help us, oh God. Help us, oh God, help us, help us, ah, help us, help us, help us, in the pruning, oh God. In the pruning, ah, help us in the fire, oh God, help us, help us, help us, help us, help us, help us. Oh, when it burns, Jesus, help us, help us, help us, help us, help us. Help us, oh God, give us a staying power, give us an enduring spirit, oh God. Help us, help us, help us, help us, help us, help us to always choose your way. Help us to always walk in your wisdom, help us to always take your counsel. Help us, help us, help us, help us, oh Lord, help us, Lord, help us, help us, help us. Ah, it is you who can help us, it is you who can help us, it is you who can help us, oh God. Help us, help us, Lord Jesus. Help us, Lord. Those many things you are giving us as consecrations are out of date. Or they are old school to the carnal Christians, help us to stay, Jesus, help us to stay. Oh, help us to stay, help us to stay, help us to stay. When it seems as though we are standing alone and we have to take a side between standing alone and standing with the carnal mind, help us to stay with you. Help us to stay with you, help us to stay with you. Yes, help us to stay with you, Lord. Help us, help us. Ah, help us, help us, help us, it's still your fear in our heart, oh God. Ah, it's still your fear in our heart, it's still your fear in our heart, it's still your fear in our heart, Jesus, help us. Help us, help us, help us. You know the specific areas that you need help with, if you can mention them to the Lord, just in surrender. You know that thing that you're currently, you know, struggling with or hoping to grow from? This is the moment to surrender them to the Lord and just say, Lord, help me, Lord, help me. Lord, help me, I don't want to get angry easily, Lord, help me, Lord, help me. Lord, help me, I don't, I don't want to get envious, Lord, help me. Lord, help me, I am, I am, I am too quick to, to give responses to people because I am short fuse. Lord, help me, 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 help me. In fact, sometimes it can be, it can be low self-esteem, that is also not the will of God for you. Help me, help me, help me, help me, help me, help me, Jesus, help me. Help me, oh, I have fear in my heart, Lord, help me, help me, help me, help me, help me. Help me, help me, help me, help me, oh, help me, Lord, help me, Lord. Help me, Lord, help me, Lord, help me, Lord. It is a private moment, it's okay, it's okay to not come off mute, it's okay to not even scream it. It is a surrendering moment to the Lord, because indeed if he is Lord, then all our response to him is surrender, is surrender, is surrender. Help us, Lord, help us, help us, help us, help us, help us, help us, help us. One of the, one of, one of, one of the ways that you should surrender is by being honest. You can't, you can't, you can't keep for me like you have it all figured out in the presence of the Lord, he knows you anyway, he sees you anyway, he sees you. He understands you anyway, he understands you anyway. So just be honest with the Lord and surrender, and surrender, and surrender, and surrender, and just say, Lord, help me, help me, help me, help me, in these specific areas. I need your help, I need your help, I need your help, I need your help, I need your help. If indeed it is the Lord that works in us to will and to do, then we need his help to will and to do of his good pleasure. We can't do his good pleasure by our own strength. We can't trust our own arm of flesh, it will fail, it will fail, it will fail, it will fail, it will fail. Oh, ask the Lord to help you, ask the Lord to help you, ask the Lord to help you, ask the Lord to help you in this moment. Thank you, Jesus. 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 Thank you, Lord. 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 Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father.
In Jesus' name we have prayed. Amen. Amen. Um, does anyone want to share anything or ask anything? Um, before we, you know, close, um, the meeting? Okay, I think that as you know, but, um, also to, you know, extend it. If, um, if you, if you are unable to maybe share on the call or share on the group, or you'd want to share privately. Um, I just felt led to, you know, ask us to do that, if this is talking to you. Or you're watching the replay and you get to this point and you, maybe along the, um, during the course of the session, you, there's something that you want to share, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the specifics, but I just felt led to share, to say that, or to ask that, um. A link will be posted in the comments, or in the description rather, of this video, so that you can, um, speak to me, actually, so you can speak to me. Um, but if you can share on the group, please go ahead and share. If you want to come off mute, I will just leave another warning for us again to come off mute and share, but if you want to type, you can go ahead and type. Or if you'd rather speak to me privately, um, please, you are very, very free to do that. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Okay, so tomorrow we continue again, um, I mean, we're, we're going into Psalm three tomorrow, he's excited. It's, I mean, I meant to say rejoice, but I feel like it will be counter, it will be counter, um, the, you know, the, the mood or the atmosphere that we are in right now. I mean, we rejoice, you, thank you, we, yes, exactly, in fact, this is a spin. This, this, this girl in the gown dancing is a spin, that's a rejoicing spin, with your hands up, you know, she's really rejoicing. Thank you, yes, yes, so, um, we continue with Psalm three tomorrow. I can't, I can't wait for us to get to the part where we'll be chanting Psalms, you know. Um, yeah, so we continue from within Psalm three tomorrow, um. Please come early so that we can start on time. Um, and so that you don't miss, you know, the themes, because if you joined this meeting late, all I can say is get the replay, you know, um, which I hope that I'll be able to make available by midnight, so that, you know, during the day tomorrow, you can plug in before you join the session in the evening, so. But come early tomorrow, come with your, um, Bible, um, and whatever you write with, because these things are not supposed to, they're not, we're not supposed to hear them and just go. There is a transfer, there's a work of transformation that God does in our spirit, but we also have to constantly go back to what we have received, so that we can unnesse them. So come with whatever you write with, um, even if it means you're on the road and you're just, or rather, you're in transit, please don't, don't walk and type wherever. Maybe you're like in, in the bus and you need to, you know, just put something down. Anyway, um, there will always be the replay for you to go back to, if you can write in the morning, but come, you know, with, with, um, your writing materials, uh, and tomorrow, I, I must even open Psalm three, this is what it's about, but if it's something that we have to chant, please tomorrow come with your, I don't know, with your chanting voices. You know, because we would, um, when we get to those parts in Psalms, we'll begin to actually do them like we're supposed to be, so. Yeah, come ready to receive from the Lord, um, and learn of him. So thank you very much, everyone, um. Before you leave the call, just, you know, write something that describes what you, what you received this evening. What, what you have learned or received or gotten this evening before you leave the, the call, so I will just leave the call on. So when you drop what you've learned or what you've received, then you can leave the call. Um, but this is good night, so good night, everyone, God bless you. Um, but this is good night, so, good night, everyone, God bless you.